Good morning. I'd like to start with our organizational chart. See what we have in public services under the umbrella. We have Public Works, Utilities and Contractor Services. Currently, we have twenty seven and a half F T Ps. Support those, those different units. You know, I've been here, I'll be four years in October. When I came, we were talking, and even as far back as my energy process about putting all the units, utilities, public works and contractor services under one umbrella. And I think that's proven itself over the last few years of how that's worked well, bringing back, bringing together communications and efficiencies that we didn't have previous. So I'd like to thank Council for, for their support. Also, the newest addition of facilities, grounds, parks and motor fleet, I think has been, it's been a real winner. We've gone from, you know, deferred maintenance to putting in place a preventive maintenance program for our facilities, looking at our grounds, spending more time. Also, it's been brought up recently about conditions of our right of ways and our, and our village land and village facilities. And with that, we're looking at putting together a stronger facilities program that you'll hear more about during this budget process. Okay. Going back to the two T rule, the eighty ninety percentage, I'd just like to identify that the eighty is two hundred and forty thousand gallons per day. The ninety percent milestone is the two hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day. This past year, June, July and August, we're at two hundred and twenty two thousand of four hundred and sixty six gallons per day, which is well under the two forty. We did trip the two forty back in twenty twenty. You can see our largest days since were July, most recently July twenty twenty three and August to twenty twenty one. So if we go to the next slide.
JP on that. Here on your controller there, that top right, on the, the right on the side. We'll advance it. There we go.
You can see the percentages, twenty twenty was a, we did trip the eighty percent rule. And then twenty twenty one, down to seventy six percent, again decreased in twenty two to seventy three percent. And then had a one percent uptick this past year. The ninety percent trigger, okay, if the eighty percent rule triggers us to go into design, which we have, ninety percent trigger is that we must be under contract, ready to go forward with construction. So I'm going to dovetail into a little bit about what Tony was talking about yesterday here. Few minutes, but the ninety percent trigger would be over the two seventy. And we haven't reached there yet. We used to look at twelve residential equivalency units, REUs per year, and we've increased that to thirty five. See the hundred and twenty to hundred and forty, REUs was projected before we hit the ninety percent ceiling.
JP, the thirty five REUs, that's basically one RE, REUs, one new home.
Per residential unit, but also it comes into play with commercial properties. So we balance those between residential and commercial.
Got you. So depending on the size of the commercial structure, it could be five, six, eight REUs.
Anywhere from two to fifteen REUs on average here on the island. Steven, would you agree with that thirty five number? I didn't have a chance really to, to be able to talk about that.
Yeah, I think where our current kind of level of construction is and what the level of work I see in the next couple of years, when I'm here.
And again, this ninety percent build out is, is something in the North Carolina State Administrative Code that we're held to. What happens if we reach that and we're not ready? Then that's when the moratorium comes into play. We're going to be happy, we're excited, we're we'll stay ahead of that.
And just as a reminder, with that, that eighty ninety, technically by the state, it's over the twelve month period. But we go above and beyond that, because we know during the seasonal June, July, August, we're going to have inflated numbers.
It's actually kind of like one of the silver linings of COVID, right? Because it triggered our planning and then our, then we went down, right? So we'll actually get a longer planning window than most people would experience it to see.
Yeah, I mean.
This side here grabs the topic for you. The red line is nine percent. You can see where we are. You can see the years, you can see where we were in twenty. Where we are now.
Interesting, the month of July is, is higher.
Historically.
But the July, but the, June and August are coming down.
Since twenty twenty.
People are going back to more normal travel patterns. They were during, you know, COVID, they were coming out and staying. Yep. And now they're, you know, international travels open back up. So, you know.
Yeah, I'm seeing that. I just find it interesting that July continues to trend upward where June and August continue to trend down.
Oh, you're saying even post-COVID.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And Scott, even more to your point, that dotted gray line is the, the average of all flows over time. You see how that remains.
Even though one month is getting higher and the other two are dropping down.
That's the month. Because we go by the three months.
I get it.
Not the twelve month, which is stipulated by the state, which is addressed in these, this communication. Some of you have seen this before. This was a letter that was written to the state by McKimmon Creed. And it identified how to be proactive and to make sure that we were where we needed to be flow wise, that we look at the three month average during our peak season versus looking at the twelve month average annually. Because if you looked at the twelve month average, we might not ever get there.
Right.
So, and then what could that create for us? It creates summertime challenges that we don't want to experience. Going back to the comments on the chart. Okay, again, as Tony was talking about yesterday, we're going from this is our current numbers. The twelve ninety two is holding, the hundred and forty seven REUs, a decrease from last year. Eighteen with maintenance programs, seventeen without, it's only one change, but from nineteen to eighteen, seventeen without has not changed. We went from total REUs fourteen forty three, which was a decrease from last year. Also, last year, our percentage of build out was fifty nine percent, we're at sixty two percent this year. That also came from adjustments that Chris had made when he was reviewing buildable properties. So that's an updated number. While the total REU count came down a little bit, total, the total build out number went up due to the undevelopable box. Chris, do you want to say anything about that?
No, I just, I did want to point out with the onsite systems that Council in oh seven approved the ordinance to put the sewer line up to Middle Island. And in that ordinance, it's stipulated in twenty years, by twenty twenty seven, all onsite systems on the island will have to have been connected to the system. So we're keeping an eye on that number. So folks are, I mean, they should know, but that eventually they'll have to come out.
And last year, we had like three or four connections. This year, we just had one. So we're going to get more proactive the closer we get to that date. So that, you know, we're, hopefully we'll have people converted before we, before we reach, not have anybody waiting to the last minute.
Twenty twenty seven, would you say?
September ninety seven. Again, future growth rate is determined by density and depends on the development, presidential development construction rates. So this is a snapshot in time.
Back, oh, hey, back up one. Sorry, I'm sorry. So the estimated waste stream capacity required for island build out, including peaking factors. You've got the six fifty gallons per day, and then repeat that, you have five eighty four.
Five eighty four is the real number, the six fifty includes the peaking.
Okay, got it. Thank you. You may have said that.
Yeah, see, we're at fourteen forty three, you see the totals, twenty four sixty two. And Tony was talking about yesterday that we are currently permitted for three hundred thousand gallons per day. Our operational goal here is to track and predict treatment flows and what our needs are so that we can process the wastewater coming into the plant. We originally, some of you might remember back in question that three hundred, we were permitted at four hundred thousand gallons per day at one time. But we were downgraded a hundred thousand gallons per day due to the reduction or the nitrogen and phosphate levels that we continually had challenges with. And we do, we've done a lot of more training with Aqua Aerobics out of Illinois. Over the last couple of years, we've used their professional staff to help us with tweaking and, and changing our processing times. And we've come into better compliance with that. Still a challenge. The Aqua Narita processing will also help with that, like Tony mentioned yesterday. So it'll, it'll have the biological process of Aqua Narita actually will help reduce nitrogen and phosphate levels versus the S B R process that we currently use. So again, we're going to the six fifty. We need to stay ahead of, of what our needs are. We don't want to slow or stop development. Any questions about this? Okay, getting into public works. Some of our operational goals that relate to operations and the barge, condense the movement of equipment and reusables, and then look at the cost of the waste streams and how best to manage these streams. So barge movement is critical. You can see with unscheduled trips and there's trips that are estimated here, we're just under six hundred trips per year, which is something that is critical to the operations of both public works and utilities and contractor services. The numbers really haven't changed much from last year from my report. Two years ago, they, and three years ago, they increased from in COVID, and they have held pretty steady since then.
Is any, are any of these trips outsourced or is this bill, do we outsource any of these?
This is just our trips.
Just our.
Well, GFL is on here.
Right.
Which is a contractor. That's probably about the only one.
So six fifty overall.
Six hundred.
Six hundred fifty overall, and there's two hundred and fifty workdays in a year. So it's about two to three per day. We're all at barge two or three times per day.
Yeah, and that's why I was critical of this information to David when he went to testify, because we needed to know how critical of an operation it is to us.
Very good. Thanks.
So your new sludge dryer, your
Sludge dryer.
That dryer thing.
Yeah, centrifuge.
Yes, yeah.
Better word.
What, what will that do in terms of?
Let's see, utilities. Like now, sledge hauling approximately thirty three trips annually, and actually we're at closer to fifty five trips this past two years. So those fifty five trips will be reduced. We'll use a centrifuge to take our sledge from a three to four percent concentration to about a twenty three to twenty five percent dryness. So what'll happen with that is that the sledge truck won't have to come over. We'll take that dried sledge off in the rollback that I'm going to talk about shortly.
Okay.
And we'll be doing that ourselves. Right now, we're paying approximately twenty we were paying about twenty five hundred dollars a trip, now we're paying about eighteen fifty. I changed carriers and we got a settlement. But that always can be annually. So we're looking at our costs last, this year, probably close to right at a hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking at moving that sledge ourself in the future on a dump truck. Once it's dried or through the centrifuge and then taking it to the landfill. Right now, we pay for a service to come get it and then we pay for it to be taken to application site.
Right.
It's a permitted site, of course. So there should be a significant savings. What the numbers exactly are, I can work on that.
You made a description about where it's dumped now versus where it would once it's dry. Is when it's dried, it can't just go to the landfill.
Correct.
So, okay.
Again, with public works as far as solid waste and recycling streams, you can see that has not changed either much in the last two years. What we have done is we have put an emphasis or a concentration on working with commercial entities and their waste streams and trying to get them be more responsible for their waste streams. We were assisting in, in a lot of removal of commercial waste stream. When I got here, we've reduced it. We still have a ways to go, but with educating our commercial businesses on the island, we've been able to cut back quite a bit on our commercial side. And also the new fees that we have started to charge for for removal and pickups has also helped considerably. Again, we focus to promote commercial entities to be responsible for their own waste streams.
That's, that's actually a bill of policy as opposed to them changing. They've been looking for the right word. But they've been lax about meeting our policy now as we're enforcing our policy.
Correct. With Florida Council, we've gone in that direction. It's been, it's really been a significant change.
I guess technically our GFL contract is between the village and, and GFL. It's primarily to handle residential collection, not commercial.
Correct. Yeah, and the commercial side, what we were getting was a lot of, in the compactors, we're getting a lot of after hours drop offs. We're getting a lot of, well, even during the day, drop offs of things that really didn't need to go in there. But I think that with us concentrating on watching that waste stream and how it was actually utilized, I think more of that's gone to the private side. I think that's where a lot of the trailer discussions have come into place, because the trailer showed up to compensate for some of that waste stream. So, you know, you try to balance things, and when something shows itself somewhere else, you try to. So I, I think we're seeing that, and that's why we're having some growth issues or growth, growing pains, if you will, with the trailer situation.
Well, that too, and, and certain contractors getting out of the wooden construction site dump boxes, right, even. There were, there was one in particular that sort of provided that service, that sort of transitioned. That increase in development, construction, and then the commercial waste stream, I think it's all cumulatively fostered that.
Contributed to it. Okay, so again, I presented the idea of the roll off truck last year. I'd like to revisit that this year. Again, our operational goals of mechanizing operations, finding a balance between equipment and personnel, time management with software, especially the work order system that we're looking to make a change for and incorporating new softwares for cross connection, for instance, that we hope will help with our efficiencies also. But as far as the roll off truck is concerned, if you look at its costs, about two hundred and eighty thousand for the truck itself, and then the purchase of the grapple roll off. The grapple roll off is is this portion right here. This boom, the sitting legs and the back box are all part of the grapple roll off for two hundred thousand dollars. So here's the roll off truck at two eighty. And here's the addition of, I call it a knuckle boom, that can be placed on the roll off truck when the roll off truck is not hauling containers. We can put this grapple or knuckle boom set up on it, and we can go from two to four of our public works employees to one person going around picking up leaf and limb debris on the island. So freeing up, if you would, two to three spots. One person can operate this truck and go around the island and pick up leaf and limb material. So right now, we're spending probably somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. If we look at taking these two things and turning them into a lease package, for instance, where we can maybe turn over the equipment every three years. So in our work environment, that would be helpful. Wouldn't have to worry about deterioration of equipment in our challenging environment here. And also it would even out the payments over a period of time. So there would be cost advantages there. What else it would help with is also moving our items and our waste stream from recycling and waste. We also do a contract outside of our residential pickup with thirty yard and forty yards of containers that we take off the island, GFL and island contract. So that would eliminate that. We also have the need for take dried sledge off, so that would help with that. We also have gravel that we spend quite a bit of money on each year. Should have been sitting right there next to water wastewater treatment sledge, but the gravel would be another huge savings. So I could see this trade off being a positive side to, to our operational costs each year.
JP, so I mean, it's a lot of stuff. And that one truck and grapple thing would handle all those things? Or this is over a course of period, we're going to have two trucks or we're going to, you know, or
Just for an instance, we pay approximately three thousand dollars for a load of gravel. We pay about three thousand, anywhere from twenty seven fifty to three thousand for every thirty to forty yard container we take off the island. And I put the numbers together and you can see real quickly that, that the savings, the hundred thousand dollars on sledge removal. There will be some costs with the centrifuge and with that, that's going to be a rented piece of equipment to start with. So there will be a savings there.
Where I was kind of going was more, you know, when Scott was doing the math, how many times we were going off the island a day? And when we're describing one truck, is that thing just moving all day long and doing different things or how was that in your head, working out?
We see that working daily and across the spectrum.
Okay.
May it be four days a week, it might. May it be five days, it might. But we have the staff onboard already that's qualified to drive the
That was my, so we have the C D Ls.
We have
This is to change the staff too.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Great. Clicking the button without realizing. Operational goal here is to evaluate roadway paving needs to provide service to the roads and to work with our annual budget plans. I know we don't pave annually, but going forward, we have, you know, the twenty six miles of road down the island and to stay, to make sure that stays in good service, we need to just be planning for that. We do go by every year and adjust the five year plan. So we, some of the information here is what we, we have. We know that right now this cost is approximately a hundred dollars on your foot. We know that the mileage that we have and what the cost would be if we did it all at once.
We had a very small budget for paving last, last year. Projection for next year, are we going to have to make up or are we holding our own right now?
We're holding our own. How that will look over the next twenty years? I think if we stay with the five year plan, you know, what it looks like is every few, you know, maybe two hundred to three hundred every other year, and then maybe occasionally the six or seven hundred thousand every third or fourth year. I would, I would say that's what we've done here the last few years. That'll probably work, but that remains to be seen. Whether, which water.
And that doesn't, that's not counting for what's in your operational budget to handle.
Correct.
The routine.
Yeah, that's not to be lost. We have a regular number in our annual budget that we use to do our repairs that we do in house. And that's outside of having somebody come over and mill and actually pave. And we do quite a bit of work in that respect, you know. I don't know how much material we go through. I can get those numbers together, but it's considerable.
So Chris, JP, how what's the, what's the life expectancy of a road on Ballhead?
Well, it just depends on where it's located. Obviously, our primary thoroughfares, the, the heavier I C vehicles are driving routinely, daily, are taking a heavier beating compared with the secondary roads off of those, versus golf carts and alleyways, but I don't, I don't have a specific number per se.
Here, here's where I'm going with this. You're going to hate this, but if we then to replace all the roads on Ballhead, anticipating life expectancy of various uses, what would that timeframe look like? Is it twenty years? Is it thirty years? Knowing that you would, you would probably have to redo several roads in South Ballhead or West Ballhead several times in that twenty or thirty year timeframe.
Well, I mean, if I think in the last twenty years, I mean, we and we have our five year paving program that assesses these roads on ten factors of condition. But in twenty years, how much of South Ballhead behind have we repaved?
Right.
Not repaved the whole thing, we paid parts that were, that needed it.
I would just like Mark to speak to that to answer that question.
Yeah, sure. So obviously, like a lot of things. Ballhead Island is kind of unique. Though the industry standard for asphalt replacement is somewhere in the fifteen, twenty standpoint, but believe it or not, in some ways, traffic helps asphalt. And then it brings the oils back to the surface, which rejuvenates the dry surface, and we don't get that here. But we also don't get to wear heavy equipment. So it's a different animal here, but I think that twenty year standpoint probably would be pretty close here. Over time, just the sun and the, and the lack of oils. If you don't do any kind of treatment to the asphalt, it's going to deteriorate.
Right. So, so in, you know, taking thirteen and a half million divided by twenty years, you're, you know, in the, what, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year range that we should be spending on constantly upgrading and upfitting. And we're, but we're always
Retaining.
Or retain.
Yeah.
But we're only spending, but we're spending a lot less. So I'm just throwing out the concept of, is, should we be looking at this differently?
Have a couple of sites coming out.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, I mean, obviously. You know, with each budget year and different priorities, there's been some years where we've our road paving has taken a hit to with other priorities.
Future slide I was going to bring up is the five year road paving and plan and the timber bridge.
Okay.
So if we look long term, you know, we, we've talked among the staff, and we think that we'd like to see some sort of long term, and the finance director, some long term planning for financing both paving and the bridge repairs. May that look like an enterprise fund or however, whatever that ends up looking like. But we would like to start, rather than just doing some short-term planning and paving in the timber bridge, is do some long-term planning and financing.
Okay. On the same lines, you have to remember in our, y'all remember the chart, the debt chart capacity? Let's say Chris is at FY twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we have no plan. Road to table included in that for, I think, five, six million.
Yep.
The CIP, developing the CIP through our AI grant, you know, that's gonna handle the sewer and the water side. But as we said yesterday, we're also on the staff side doing public works and paving and the timber bridge. So we're gonna combine those into an overall CIP. Where you'd be able to look by fiscal year and expenditure, and I think that's gonna be huge. And when you see that, then we might have a further discussion of, well, does timber bridge and paving mean enterprise fund? Or, you know, you have that discussion, but the CIP, I think, will drive that discussion.
Okay. When, when, yeah, we can go on this all day long. The roads, so when you're looking at this, we're looking at the current outline of our roads right now in our right-of-ways. And talking about Josh's fire districts and analysis of different locations on the island and how trucks are actually, you know, for emergency situations, are all of our roads conducive to actually the firefighting? And I know that I suspect they really are. And so when you're looking at different cul-de-sacs, et cetera, do we have to start studying those for, you know, enlarged occasions?
Well, since Josh come aboard, we have had more open dialogue about that. And most recently with overhead cutting and tree access. So we're headed in that direction. I wouldn't say we're there yet, Josh, but we're, we're at least starting the conversation, correct?
Yeah, I was, so I was saying the last, you know, like, like JP was saying, the last six months, we've, me and JP have sat down multiple times. We're working together to figure that out. Figuring out where the water needs, where we need water at more so on the island and other places. He's doing the districting, we're following that. The districting, like you were saying, Mayor, is something that he, that JP is doing on the water side. We just adopted that.
Right.
But it's like, it's gonna, and we, when we do that, it's gonna affect just our hydrants, everything, everything will be districted. So if we have an issue, we'll be able to shut down hydrants on this district versus shutting down the whole island. Like we can not.
Yeah, I guess where I was gonna.
Vehicle.
Yeah, I was looking.
Vehicle or access. Yeah, one of the emphasis of that there was with Middle Island. You know, their change in who they've had managed and their, their overhead cutting, they're not doing it quite like they used to and should. There are purposes of having adequate access. And I've asked Josh to reach out to the P O A president to make that, make them aware of that.
Yeah, I think where I was going though, was my conversations with Chip. Some of it was along the line of, you know, if you're fighting a fire, you want to be able to bring trucks in for more than one direction. And there's so many places all across this island that that's impossible. And whether there's a need to be looking at the island and need more pull-off areas, whatever, that would allow trucks to be turning around, actually approaching fire and then turning.
I don't know. So in every fire district, you're gonna have issues like that.
Yeah.
Cul-de-sacs, just no way to approach from two angles.
Right.
I think just the narrowness of those, Chris, is the problem, but as JP said earlier, the widening project that they, they just completed, that's helped out a lot with our, with that, with us. Because before, we couldn't even, we'd get behind a couple of golf carts, especially on federal route. There was nowhere for them to pull off, we're just stuck behind them blasting cider. There's nowhere for them to go. So I think, I think we're, we're getting better as far as vehicle or access in the fireside. The overhead they hired a company for overhead that's gonna help out this, the new ladder truck, we're gonna have to have some overhead clearance.
And most recently, we already talked about it, but the shoulder work. And we've taken back the cutting two feet on both sides, that's what Josh is talking about. So we've opened up the canopy a little bit that we have, it's a work. So we're trying to make moves in the right direction, but maybe there needs to be more formalized discussion. Before I move on, I just wanted to give Zach an opportunity to say anything about the timber bridge or the paving financing going forward. Is there anything else you wanted to say, Zach? Again, a work in progress is contractor services. Operational goal here is to more efficiently and effectively utilize the area available for storage and parking for the contractors' needs. We do have a lot of work to do here. We've come a pretty good ways, but we have good ways to go. As you can see, we have some of these areas squared off. We have the new gates that have been installed. Currently, they are installing. Let me do that. We're installing fencing as we speak from here to the new gate over to here, and then it's gonna come over here to this area. And it's, what it's gonna do is isolate the public works area. We'll do away with the gate here. We're gonna start using, this is an old photo, that's all been cleaned up. I own contracting is now out of this area, so it's used by us and GFL. You can see where the containers are here. Also, we're trying to talk more about putting a cardboard compactor in this area. We already have our two solid waste compactors here. We think we can tie into this one, can do it in-house at a reasonable cost and put a cardboard box right, right here, compactor right here. Also, we have the gate out front here. We have some more fencing that we need to put in here and also down this backside. We have this storm containment area that needs to be developed, a storm area containment that needs to be developed according to our state stormwater plans. So we have started to move the vehicle parking out of here. You'll see there are larger trucks and things that used to be parked here aren't here anymore. But these two areas are gonna have to be improved. Will they be able to still be used for parking? Probably not, but we're gonna look at those options. This is the tag area back here. We have the new pumps out front. We also have these areas that need to be cleaned up and cut back. And we moved most of these people here over. We are gonna have one operation still in the back here, but we are better utilizing these spaces through here.
So JP, that currently, that little elliptical thing in front of the next public safety building, right?
Right.
Yeah, well, it's, it's all about, it's right here. So there's a bunch of carts and stuff parked there now, is that?
Yeah, that was always intended for cart parking.
Oh, okay, that was a question, okay.
What the improvement needs to be there is how they're parked and charging stations. Those are the two improvements we need to make.
Okay. And do, do those people have to get permitted to be there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's parking, car parking that we charge to contractor services. Yeah, we used to have a car and then vehicle parking here, but we just continue the vehicle parking here for safety purposes.
Yeah, JP, when we get the fencing totally in, could we hit Brian Genest as part of his re-evaluation of what we planned it last year? And just see if there's more screening that is recommended or?
Whatever, definitely. Any other questions about this? We've gone ahead and put the palm trees in here. I think it's been a huge improvement. But again, we have a lot of cleanup to do. We designated parking areas by putting tape, by a semi-permanent tape down the ground. I don't know if you've noticed that. We've also numbered and posted a lot of these parking areas, which is, we have a lot of work to do in this area still. Yeah, there's a lot of cleaning up in these, these areas.
In terms of the next phase of the contractor services building, is there any demand for that now or is there a timeframe that?
We are tracking that, I don't have that information with me, but I can get it to you.
Yeah.
We didn't, were able to reutilize, repurpose some of the old tonics boxes, which we staged at the end of the building.
Yeah.
And
They go down to the big tree right now. So we, everything we pulled up, Panama trap. We took the good ones and we put them in this area here. Then we got rid of the bad boxes.
Right.
There's a, was that looking at the finances on paying back, you know, the construction of the first set relative to the man and need for the second phase and how many units would be included in that and we could fill them all? It's, I think, the question of what JP's sort of watching and engaging.
Right, right.
This is, or some of the improvements that they made in that area I just referred to. Also, we've realigned these boxes back here, so you can't go all the way through to the public works section anymore. We're also doing quite a bit of trimming and, and cleaning up in that area. Here are the new pumps that have worked out well. The fencing will be placed in the back of these, on the backside of the building out to the existing gate. That's where that'll be going. Have to relocate the air compressor at that point.
So JP.
That's there for use, but contract.
Yeah, you talked about all the stuff that still needs to be done here. Do you have a timeframe for this? I mean.
We're kind of doing it as we go.
Okay.
It's taken. I've been working on this since I came.
I know, I know, that's why I was asking. Thought you might like a new product.
It's just we, I don't know if you have anything to add.
You know, we just, we expended the money to do what, really to do what we've done up to this point.
Yeah.
And so we're just trying to do things internally without having to ask for funds to just sort of knock it out in one fell swoop. You will, and, you know.
Are we hearing a lot of negative feedback that it's taking too long, it's going too slow or?
The only negative feedback we ever got.
Me.
Yes, yes, from island residents, yes.
Okay.
Other than the initial cutting of the vegetation to put the stormwater pond in.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that to be critical in, in any way, other than I don't think people appreciate how long that transition was gonna be. And, you know, just sort of the eyesore nature of it, right? Parking all over the place, like, actually, the question is, I didn't realize that that was always intended to be cart parking right there. I mean, looks terrible, right? I mean, you pull up to our, our building here and the, you know, there's a parking lot out there. So great suggestion, let's talk about the screening and what we can do with planting and that kind of stuff. But I don't think, I don't think anybody thought that was a three or a four-year venture. I, I, I didn't, you know.
We'll reevaluate that parking, because there is, there there was area on the site plan over by the pumps to do some golf cart parking as well, but we'll, we'll revisit that.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
This area here, but we've used this area for temporary overnight parking as well, we've been using it for.
So Scott, let me ask the question this way. If people, if you gave people the choice of, look, we can clean this all up at one time, but it's gonna cost money to do it, we're gonna have to find the money to do it. Or should we continue just to take our time, pay as we go and?
Yeah. I think we've probably pushed people to the, the limit on pay more at this point, right? Now, now, let's, let's look at that. I mean, I don't think that's a fair question to ask. I, I don't think you can isolate it. It would probably turn into a bigger conversation of, but what, what things did we spend money on that I would have chosen not, right?
That's fair enough, fair enough.
But yeah, I, no, I, I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah.
And, and we can't go back, but I think, you know, this is one of the things that I think this group, this body has done a really good job on going forward is being more mindful and, and planful about when you do a project, taking into account landscaping and things like that to finish it out. Because, I mean, my sense is, and I think a lot of people's senses, and even with what Chris just added there, is we kind of underfunded this project at the beginning. And now we're dealing, you know, we're kind of piecemeal, trying to bring it to conclusion. And that's a frustration to everybody, I think. I don't think anybody that, you know, so I'd flip it back to you. When we asked people three years ago for the money to do this, did they think they were gonna end up with cars parked all over for three years? No, right? They thought they were gonna get a, a properly landscaped project to, you know, that looked good, you know, like, like other projects that we've done here, right? And so again, credit, I think we got it right going forward, but in hindsight, yeah, that's probably a miss on that one.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I know, so I think there's, the one thing I'd add to that is that, you know, with the new focus with Brian Genest and the new improvements he's made in the spotlighting right-of-ways and public property going forward, we intend to step up our game on that program and it will make this area is gonna be included.
Sure. I think just off the top of your head, and don't try and find the number later, how many people are pulling out of that parking lot every day and going back in every night? I don't know.
It's, I, I don't know. We, we try to evaluate it and it's hard because something, it, it changes throughout the day. It is a snapshot that you see at five thirty in the morning, when the first ferry comes over as opposed to snapshot you see. You know, in the middle of the day, it changes throughout the day, different contractor.
I think that's one thing that the public will never realize when you're looking at a, a project that you go in, we're gonna pave this thing landscaping and then we're gonna use it. This is like, no, this has to be operating all every day while we're doing that.
And we can't pave because of our stormwater permitting. So some of it has to stay permeable. But I can get you non-rental numbers, we have those.
Yeah.
I was, I was suggesting, it's pretty steady during the day, pretty even.
Can I just, one sec, because Chris mentioned something about, I, I was assuming you were trying to do away with some of that parking in that little place that I was pointing at. I, I don't know that you have to do that, I think it's just that it, if it looked less haphazard.
Yeah.
I think that's.
It just looks like people pull up in the yard.
Like people, yeah, so I think that's, that's all that needs to be done.
For some reason, we haven't caught them.
Yeah, we did something more like this. Gave them designated spots. And when the chargers go in, it's gonna look better.
They don't look better.
Yes, and I agree, the screening needs to be improved. We even debated whether to put, you know, a blind up, a wooden fence somewhere, you know. So we need to probably engage in those conversations and see where that goes.
In the, in the long run, does this get, all that parking get paved or does it?
Yeah.
No.
It needs to be permeable to the stormwater.
Okay.
Okay, how are we doing on time? Because I know I'm split into two different times with a break in between.
Well, if, if we stop talking, you would be, it would be all time.
So you've got to eleven fifteen.
Straight on to watch.
Eleven fifteen and it's, and it's ten fifty eight.
We missed the break.
Oh.
Gonna break at ten thirty.
Got you, okay. Is everybody okay?
I'm a little more than halfway through.
Okay, yeah.
I take a break here.
Yeah, I wanna tell some people.
Okay. You going? Okay, beach access repairs, maintenance. Operational goal, efficiently and safely moving residents and visitors on and off the beaches. So we're doing really well in this area. As you can see, we have accesses planned for this year. One, four, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five. I don't know why twenty-five's there twice. And you can see total cost is a hundred and fifty thousand, which is pretty close to what we spent this past year. But we are getting to the point where we'll be coming preventative maintenance versus deferred maintenance catch-up. So we're in a good place. Mark, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, just this next year, you know, we thought we were getting caught up and, and those bottom ones, fifteen, thirty-three, twenty-five, all just had a lot of encroachment with northeasters we got recently, so we're just gonna have to do dune overs on those.
So on the one hand, we have good news, the dunes are growing. On the other side of the coin, we need some more dune overs or something. Be more. Any questions about the beach accesses? I know in twenty-four, we've made some improvements there. We continue to add gravel to that parking lot. And we'll continue to improve that every chance we get. Okay, shifting to the weights, to the water and wastewater plant or operational goals to be operationally, to meet operational design criteria, both of the wastewater plant and the water plant. And to make sure the status of equipment and operations is where it needs to be. This is a picture of the EQ basin, we've done some work here this year. The reason I am putting this slide was to see some of the grit buildup. This really hasn't been cleaned going back to nineteen ninety-six. I do need to do a I do need to do a, a clean here. We probably have about five tandem dump trucks of material that needs to come out. Again, this will be dried and then hopefully taken to the landfill versus to a permanent site. But also, uh, getting the, the EQ down to this level where you can see the condition of the concrete, uh, how much grit we have. Traditionally, we don't have a lot of grit here. Uh, we have purchased a new screen. Um, that's gonna help. That screen will be installed here in the spring before our summer months. Uh, that screen was also designed to work with the new plant, so that won't be a replacement. It's, it's an improvement now for later. But see, the, the, we've had to do a number of repairs in the SBR basins themselves. We've made most of those. We've done renovated two basins. We have one more, uh, base number one to renovate this spring. Utilitech, while they're here doing the lift station, uh, improvements are also gonna help us work out the plant. Uh, and replace some of the pumps and apparatus that we have in those, in that SBR. As far as our collections and distribution, uh, we need to be able to move water and wastewater effectively and efficiently. Uh, we want our future planning to be reflected in the future CIP. We are working on the IAA with Withers Ravenel on that. Um, two of the lift stations that will need to be worked on are these two. Uh, so plant upset and filter waste lift station and the plant F one lift station. Uh, as far as the water distribution goes, we've taught, I don't have any pictures for water distribution, but we have talked about hydrants. We have started to improve the hydrants. Um, we were able to address the ones in the worst shape this past two years. Um, those were huge improvements. You can see the ones have been repainted and some raised, um, and all the internal parts replaced. So are in better shape and mostly the hub bolts in a lot of places that were really bad have been caught up on, uh, and improved. As far as water distribution and districting goes, um, right now, if we have a major event on the island, most of the time we have to shut the water down to the island. Terrible idea, I know, but it's some of our only options. We have a plan right now. Um, we have budgeted to insert the valves to be put in the commercial district area. What that will enable us to do is keep the commercial district isolated. So if we had a storm come through and we had personnel both here in public safety utilities and we need the market open, isolate that section and keep that operation. That's step one. What, where do we go from here? We'd like to put a number of other districts out in the island and take piping with home runs to each of those districts so that we could feed those districts one of two ways. Either through the existing system or through the new home runs going to those districts. And then, um, that as we, and when we completed that, we wouldn't have to do a complete shutdown of the island anymore. So that's where we're headed.
Will the folks with Withers, can they map on the GIS where you propose the districts to go?
They're even actually proposed the districts. I'm just asking them to help me evaluate them. I have in my own mind what I'd like to be, but I don't have stamps, so, um, I'll be discussing that with them and looking at all the parameters and limitations and what we currently have and what we need to be to make sure that Josh has what he needs to, to fight a, a major alarm fire in each of the districts. And the biggest win here, I think, is that not shutting down the whole island when we do, uh, have issues, especially the commercial districts, especially the restaurants, uh, infected them the way we do when we do a shift.
We're kind of, so when you're talking about shutdowns for events versus a break in the line. You know, so if you have a break in line somewhere, would you be able to isolate, break in line as soon as you introduce a home run everywhere?
Yes, sometimes we can now, depending on where the valves are, um, and how well they're working. But most of the time, as you've seen since I've been, in my experience since I've been here, I think we've had two or three that we've, we had shut down flow entirely, and, um, I just like to move away from that.
So ultimately, how many shut-off valves are you talking about installed?
Can't answer that right now.
Which Withers and Gravinell figure, gonna figure that out.
It's, we're gonna be, we're gonna, they're doing the AIA assessment right now. Through the assessment, we'll have an answer to how, not only how many valves we have, but how many of those are still operational. Because over time, you lose those. So we'll have to go back. Uh, there is technology so we can place the guts to some of those rather than inserting, uh, putting in insert valves, but the insert valve technology has come a long ways in the last few years, so it's not a bad, bad option either. Um, another big win with, um, Mike Harris's section, he's the superintendent for facilities, grounds, parks and motor fleet, is that we have the motor fleet management plan. Uh, in that plan, you can see the numbers here. Um, but most importantly in this plan, what it helps us see is turnover. Then we need to, um, retire a certain unit, maybe a piece of heavy equipment or a golf cart or a truck. Um, and I think that's gonna be very valuable going forward. Uh, Mike and the mechanic also do the evaluations and take, uh, either at the recommendation of a department or uh, they see a need of a vehicle or a, a piece of equipment to be taken out of service. That, that goes to them to make that decision, uh, and then we, we handle that going forward. Our goal here is to identify related transportation heavy equipment assets, make those assets, uh, the best they can be to serve and to meet operational needs and reasonable expenditures. This here is to put on the table the, um, for start discussion of a village called IPC fence replacement. Uh, we've had, uh, looked at a number of, of ways to go about this with wooden and synthetic. And it's been decided that we're gonna go the synthetic route, and if you, would you talk about that a little bit?
Well, we're, we're working on a prototype of what a synthetic might look like for, um, both for folks to review on, you know, this, if you might understand this, uh, part of the associations review. Obviously, we will counsel speed back or something, but we'll have some prototypes for you to look at before we pull the trigger on anything. Obviously, a synthetic fence would be a little easier to maintain.
And is there example of that fencing down in the harbor area or?
There is, and we're getting one designed exactly like this for folks to see, a, a small prototype piece.
Yeah, Mayor, if you recall, I guess probably two years ago, we did some work. I, I'd say this fencing's probably been there for twenty plus years. But we cut the base at the bottom and started to rot out.
Yeah, last year we came across, a lot of this was rotten in the ground. So we just came, to get a little bit more life out of it, came along and trimmed it off.
And we talked about that prototype and so I asked, wanted to give me a uh, get me one, at which point, um, the, the property itself and the D uh, requires association for any change. That's where it's at.
Yeah, did the, did we go through any approval process or did we even saw the fencing that's down in the harbor?
No, we didn't do that. That's on a private.
It's just a sample on a private property.
Okay, so they've already gone through, they went through their harbor review. They must have gone through the harbor. Yeah, because, you know, before you go too far, you know, I know that they're I'd like to at least be within their window of approval, you know.
Yes.
Materials.
Agreed.
Okay, um, sum up some of the areas. Again, we talked about a ten-year capital improvement plan, the CIP. We think that that's gonna be a, uh, extraordinary tool for short and long-term planning and funding. Um, and we're anxious to get that in place. Um, wayfinding program as well on its way. We're probably a third of the way through that and sign replacement. Um, CNC router has, has proved itself, um, and it's worth, so we're, we've been utilizing that for a lot of both, um, signage for both traffic control and, um, street names and beach safety, so it's coming in. Uh, street sideways facilities and grounds, the roll-off truck I've talked a little bit about today. Um, both for dry sledge and rock purchases mostly. Um, also moving, uh, some of the, uh, recycling stream or donation stream on, off the island. Fencing, grading asphalt roads, work services, public contractor service area. It's been, like we said, I'm going too long. We're trying to stay focused to get that where it needs to be. Islandwide asphalt paving and timber bridge maintenance plan. Again, um, we'd like to talk about some sort of long-term, um, financing or, or budgeting for, for the long-term plans or sciences. Stormwater containment areas, we've done some overlay, um, for the parking, maybe side contract services, fuel dispensers have been installed. We also continue to need some, um, some red lines on other parts of the island where we think that it would be be to an advantage to put in some piping like we already have for some of our stormwater infrastructure. And we continue to look at that through grants. I'm working with Jay on that. Uh, we did, uh, put some of that forward and brick last year, weren't successful, but we'll continue to work. Wastewater plant improvements, um, continually improve current operations to meet our compliance. We're looking to better manage our sledge. Looking at redundancy programs for the wastewater, uh, treatment plant that we put in place over the last couple of years. We also are looking and always look at odor control projects. What we've done operationally to this point is change our operations and make our adjustments uh, to the current operation and treatment process, and I think we have reduced odors over time and we'll continue to do that. Collection system, we talked about that. We went from a three-year plan to a five-year plan, uh, for the larger, um, lift stations on the island. The smaller ones, we will be addressing in-house. Uh, you saw, heard from Tony Bowen yesterday about the, uh, about the wastewater treatment plant expansion. So we hope to be shovel-ready. Right now, everything hinges on the funding coming from the state when that'll be available. So that twenty twenty-four date, uh, is a moving date. Uh, water distribution, our meter, um, AMI, uh, upgrade and central monitoring is still moving forward. Um, talked to Chris and Jay about a number of challenges we had with our vendor and this topic, but we are moving ahead. Mark, is there anything you'd like to say about, about that project?
No, it just might be phased over. Repeat this, please.
Uh, water plant expansion planning, again, Tony talked about that yesterday. Well, system, uh, R O pre-treatment improvements we made, we completed this year. Uh, we are seeing, um, increases or benefits from that as far as amount of chlorine used and other chemicals. Uh, we still were late getting, uh, ROC online, but as that is, um, put into place, uh, we'll have a cutback to our runs with water demands, uh, and we'll see some improvements there. And I already talked about the fleet, um, maintenance program and vehicle and car heavy equipment inventory.
Uh, one's comment on the target plan for permitting of the expansion project. I would probably say it may be first quarter of twenty twenty-five. Uh, at the earliest, but that the nine hundred sixty-five thousand grant, state grant we got, um, as of day before yesterday, Zach and Drew, Moritz are pressing DEQ uh, to see where that's at, um, since we got the hundred fifty thousand on the Vipers like in the back of the way, so.
And that fund, that nine hundred sixty-five thousand will take us through permitting and will be, uh, bid ready to get this. Um, so I had an earlier slide that we're looking at maybe our earliest possible ninety percent uh, trigger may come into effect, maybe right now, you, the numbers we're using is the summer of, uh, twenty twenty-six. So if we get twenty twenty-five and stay ahead of that, that's what we're trying to do. Great. It's eighteen months for permitting and finished design and permitting. And I put this slide here, talk a little bit about the bridge. Uh, we are continually making improvements up there and looking at it, replacing boards if needed. Um, but we would like to talk about some long-term planning or financing of not total replacement, but improvements that need to be made over time. Again, it will be in the CIP. At this point, I'd just like to, um, introduce Mark Johnston to the viewers that don't know him, but most of you do know him and worked with him. Mark came to us from Breckenridge, Colorado a couple of years ago. We just, uh, staff decided um, that it was time that we had a project manager to, uh, condense our projects, be more efficient. Uh, so Mark came on board and he's been doing that. He's done a great job and gonna turn it over to him.
JP's already hit on a lot of the, the capital items that, uh, were considered in the next few years, but I just wanted to kind of go over a few things. Um, JP's really been proactive in the world, capital world in general. And has gotten really good short and long-term plans, um, for aging infrastructure, which is great. And so, um, just wanna kind of hit on some highlights. Um, on a weekly basis, he meets with his superintendents and challenges them to think about capital needs, both short and long-term. And as you saw from our presentation with, uh, Rivers Ravenel yesterday, um, from a utility standpoint with the AI grant, we're in an excellent situation where they're gonna, you know, take data-driven decisions or really help us dial in our, our ten-year CIP plan. But I think it's also important to know that we're, we're able to do that kind of work, um, in the public works side of the, the coin too, because we have really good expertise with, with JP's superintendents and just um, JP's experience. And so, um, we're also really poised for it, be able to put together and continue to have a really nice ten-year CIP plan. Um, but the things I want to review with you now are just kind of our short-term wish list. Uh, it's important to recognize that these things may or may not happen in twenty twenty-five, if you know, in the early stages of dealing with things and talking to Chris and talking to Zach about whether we can afford them, but these are kind of our, our wish items that we wanted to review with you. So, um, we've got a couple of vehicles that are up for replacement on the utility side and would be covered in the utilities fund and, um, something we'd like to, to discuss in the budget process. Um, JP also mentioned that we're gonna, we have some smaller lift stations that we're gonna make some upgrades in-house and um, we'd like to anyways, and so that's, that's what these next three items are. The, the pumps and the panels are just things that we'd like to, you know, consider doing some in-house work on. JP also, uh, discussed some of our valves are aging and, um, you know, we'd like to up our, our valve exercise program where we go in and we actually exercise those valves, make sure they're in working order, so, and that involves a a, a piece of equipment to make that process more efficient and just time and boots on the ground to actually do that. There's also just a need for some pipe rack storage and some door replacements at the plant. We already discussed the roll-off truck and the return on investment that might be beneficial there. We have some storage needs at the, the, uh, wastewater treatment plant that are fairly immediate, um, because we have been buying, um, redundant pieces of equipment, new pumps and things like that. So when something does fail on us, we have it in-house and we're able to make those replacements. And then finally, our, you know, our, uh, OR membranes, uh, need to be replaced just for efficiency purposes. So the wish list in the public works world, obviously we come out of the general fund and some of these are pretty lofty. Um, boats, but things that we want to just bring to your attention. We have a fairly aggressive, what we talked about, um, asphalt replacement plan, but our, our sidewalks, uh, could probably use some attention and that's an expensive prospect, so. Something we wanted to throw out to you that we want to continue to discuss, um, in years, uh, in the future here. Um, another big item that JP discussed was, uh, the cardboard compactor. We currently compact our cardboard with basically a crude ramrod. Um, and they obviously make, you know, these big commercial compacters, which would make the, the amount of mass material coming off the island less and ultimately be able to save us money and, and it's more environmentally friendly, obviously. Um, the gravel loader, something JP showed you earlier, probably not gonna be a twenty twenty-five item, but something that we just wanted to put on your radar. Another big ticket item that probably would not be a twenty twenty-five item, but is something we need to discuss. Another big ticket item that probably would not be a twenty twenty-five item, but is something we need to discuss is um. Our, our public work staff has plussed up uh, two folks this past year. And we're looking at additional uh, staffing in the future, and so we're going to outgrow our building. And when we do, probably the most logical thing to do would be to build a new maintenance facility where we would do repairs on the vehicle. And then take over uh, where we're doing that now, our current building and have more room for staffing lockers and meeting rooms and. Just the general supplies that we need to, will be associated with additional staff. Um, let's see, what else should we cover here? Um, we talked about, you know, the stormwater retention um, needs. That would be split on, under both public works and um, contractor services, which we'll cover here in a minute. JP discussed uh, the timber bridge. One of the many parts of that CIP plan would be to replace the actual walkway. Uh, you know, on the, the Marina side, there's pedestrian walkway and we've got a recent estimate of about seventy-five thousand dollars just to replace those boards. Put in perspective, you know, how big of an asset that is and that that's an important thing that we think we need to do. We've been flipping and replacing boards on the drive surface, but that walkway has been uh, had less maintenance done to it in recent years. And then the final. Part of our wish list is just things of contractor services. Um, being a commercial building, our garage doors and our, pardon, people doors are. Um, used at a commercial level, and so there's a need for upgrades and, and maintenance on, on those doors. And we just wanted to identify that. I'm talking about some parking stops and just changes to the parking area. Our fuel tanks are, are fairly old and they've never been professionally cleaned. That's what fuel polishing is. Um, something that we need to do in the near future, just to continue to have um, efficient use of the tanks and, and have good clean fuel coming out of them. And then uh, just some golf cart parking infrastructure, um, most of that's electricity. Electricity to allow for charging while they're there, so we don't have drop cords hanging around, um, kind of the aesthetics. Talked about, of course, just some funding, uh, potential funding down the road to make sure we get all of our stormwater needs met, so. That's a quick overview into some of the things we're thinking about capital-wise in the next coming years, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I guess I assume, you know, when you're going through your wish list and um. And some of the large-ticket items, you know, we talked about the roll-off truck and the attachment. It was pretty clear from JP, there's like, there's a payback period that should be actually pretty short on something like that. And, you know, when it comes down to our review of the budget with Chris, you know, all that information should be critical. I think almost any of these things, you know, a lot of them is maintenance, but the big-ticket items are things that it'd be great to see with the payback.
Absolutely, and you know, Zach won't let us bring these big-ticket items to him without, he's talking about the return on investment and something JP challenges us with too. And so we're looking at that, really just kind of introducing concepts to you now. By the time we get suggestions dialed and bring to you for a final budget, we'll, we'll take that analysis. Thanks. Thank you.
John, well, thank you.